Good morning. Want to welcome you to this committee's hearing this morning. It's February 15th. Mr. Clerk, we've got several items on the agenda, but we also have cards from the public. So I'm going to start taking the cards before we actually go into the items. So I'm going to try to take as many cards as I can. I want to start off with Mr. Previn. Come on up. You've got two minutes. And Mr. Spindler, you have two minutes as well. Restart his time. Okay, Mr. Previn.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, sir. And I understand you're struggling. You've got a nine-month backlog for licenses. You're thinking about some kind of a lottery. But I must tell you, you've got to cut some of the red tape. That's the big mission here. And I don't know that a lottery is going to do that so much as it's going to make a few lucky winners and have everybody else remain pissed. So I don't know. I feel what you're trying to do, but it's not going very well. And I appreciate the effort to try to spend campaign funds on home care. It's a great idea. But, sir, you just approved in this very hall, you remember, a very, very dirty deed to jack up the matching rate for all your friends out in CD-12 Waste Management who are then going to pile on and give you money for your supervisory district race. I mean, it just totally smells to high heaven, sir. You've got John Lee, the guy from the -- it's just one big administration of CD-12 people ripping us off. They got a $2.5 million election, plus they got a $1 million feeding in that matching fund. And you're throwing it to the Ethics Commission on February 19th, which is a date coming up next week, Tuesday morning. Let me just say this, sir. I want you to get Mike Fier to come on down to the Ronald Reagan Building where we're suing him. We're suing him, and he wants to defend it orally himself because he's got to explain to the people why these various draconian rules, including pulling paper agendas out of public meetings. I know that this morning, when all the insiders are here, we put a few out, but during regular City Hall council meetings, you've banned them. And we've got cities all over knows and I haven't hear about cities across LA, like the state. Cities all over California provide paper meeting agendas because they understand that, like your study group and other folks, people need to pay attention to the public officials. Now, I know you think you're above it all and feel like you're doing a great job, but, sir, you're not the only one. And quite frankly, there is some suspicious behavior going on here. We've got the FBI and all sorts of other characters. So I would ask you to restore, hashtag restore, agendas to LA meetings, okay, sir? That is a very direct request from people out here who are fumbling around, trying to figure out what the hell you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Spindler?
All right, so go ahead. We talked about this.
Yes, we want to discuss first of all this shit on item number two. What is this, Nuri? Trying to cut off the power? Shutting off the power just because a cannabis license is not present on the wall? If you pay your fucking utility bill, you're supposed to have electric and water, bitch. You should know better than that.
Hey, man, stay on topic.
Now, these two other fools called fools, they don't understand the fact that when you pay your water bill, the Constitution of California requires the switch be put on. You cannot deny utilities on the basis of race, religion, nationality, and smoking fucking weed. That's right. We're not smoking crack like Mike Bonin. We're smoking weed. So no to item number two. Didn't we get to the lottery shit on item number one? The big cannabis lie. Mr. Spindler and myself, we tried to go to the Cannabis Commission meeting on Wednesday, canceled again. And her name is Cat? Cat Baloo?
Cat Parker.
Cat fucking Parker, yes. Cat Baloo Parker. That bitch keeps canceling those goddamn meetings. The commission never meets. So we're here to try to fight. We all want to sell marijuana. All of us want to grow marijuana. We want to package and sell it, especially to people under 18. We want to get them hooked on the THC, fool. We want to get them all high. So we want to get everybody involved in this. Smoking dope is cool. Smoking dope, no fool. Get the FBI in here. And I want to start growing my shit and selling it like Nuri did all those years.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Okay. With that said, Mr. Clerk, I think we can move items three through 13. So if the members -- in fact, I'm joined by Ms. Martinez and Mr. Harris Dawson, so we have a full complement of members here. So on items three through 13, why don't we deem those approved? All right? So that brings us back to comment from the public. I'm hopeful, real comment from the public. Nicole Brinson, Tyrone Freeman, Virgil Grant, and Arturo Flores. Please come forward when I call your name. Donnie Anderson, Elizabeth Oderstrom -- oh, here's Mr. Freeman. Come on. If I've called your name, please, because I want to try to get everybody up, so we're going to have to move. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member -- honorable members of the committee, Tyrone Freeman, California Minority Alliance. I want to give a brief overview of our position and response to the recommendations from the department. And considering the challenges that is before regarding the licensing process, we've placed in our documents a more detailed explanation of a proposal, Mr. Chairman, that would allow for a lottery-based system with --
Wait, let's stop all over. Now, this is just their own one subject, it's one-minute per. So let's restart his time at one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, this -- the overall response that organization puts forward is an opportunity to include a lottery process that has what we call a simple hurdle threshold. What that means is that those who would actually elevate into the pool of the lottery would pretty much be turnkey operators. So when you look at Phase Three for storefront operations, we're looking at those individuals who qualify under Tier One and Tier Two, who have their facilities either inspected by the Fire Department or DHR, a combination thereof, under Rule Number Seven, and also including the fact that it's important to include pre-inspection into the process as a condition of entering into the lottery. I close by saying it makes no sense to process an application when someone may fail the LA Fire Department inspection. So to give them a license to complete the process and their building is not up to code makes no sense. We've wasted a lot of time and effort. If we put a simple hurdle threshold, one or two, that's a little barrier that says you're ready to go, you qualify when you upload your application, we know that those individuals are ready to be processed and to go forward along with being verified Tier One or Tier Two applicants. So we wanted to throw that in as a basic conceptual model for moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Good morning. We want to make sure we expand the 20 to 40 for delivery. Make sure that we expand it to those who are in social equity and prepared to go as well as those that's not. So we just want to support everything that we put forth in our plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Osterman. I am co-founder and owner of Loki Lotion, Los Angeles Cannabis Top company. I'm here this morning to talk about small cannabis businesses. Loki Lotion has fought hard to follow the guidelines, and by staying within the written regulation, we have exhausted all of our financial resources. We have risk partnerships and relationships trying to navigate licensing. It's been a humbling and terrifying year for me personally as a woman in cannabis. Women are the biggest minority in this space right now, constantly being disregarded. We have city approval, but are having a hard time securing the resources needed to move into state licensing. If small brands had banking to grow their businesses, like other industries, your small brands would have not to give up ownership. The most heartbreaking aspect of this process, you have so many amazing brands here in Los Angeles that are fighting hard to be -- to have the right here, to be here in these communities. Every day that goes by, large corporate brands are putting their local homegrown businesses out of business. Please help Ms. Packer help your local, small minority-owned businesses stay in business.
Finish your sentence.
By releasing funds to support our social equity program.
Thank you. Yes, please identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, guys, for having me. My name's Arturo Flores, longtime resident of South Central Los Angeles, 30 years, Marine Corps veteran. I'm here today to talk about an issue that we're going to be discussing later. I know there's a lot of people that are here to talk about the same issue. I want to say welcome. We're amongst the few privileged that actually have the time and information to come out here. I know that the young -- the woman before me said, "Help Ms. Pat Packer." And I agree wholeheartedly. I think that she has not been helped. I think that a lot of what you guys are asking her to do has been underfunded, and it's a disservice to my community. So I'm here today to speak more on that when I have more time. I'll go more into detail as to what I mean by that. But definitely injustice has happened and disservice has happened. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents from South Central Los Angeles and a lot of those residents that have been impacted by the war on drugs and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could also get to come up to the center, Felicia Carvajal, Jasmine, is it Aguilar, Jorge Nuno, and Oscar Aguayo? Yes?
Good morning. My name is Ricky Ross, longtime resident of Los Angeles. The only time that I haven't lived here is when I did 20 years in prison from the war on drugs. I'm hoping that we keep the micro-licenses because some of us didn't file for other licenses when they did it because we thought they were going to be micro-licenses. And I'm one of those. The other thing, I believe, that making the red zone with the licenses has hampered people who don't have the money, like myself, because what it's allowing to do is the people with the money are buying up all the real estate. And now they control the real estate, and if they control the real estate, they wind up controlling the business. And I think it's very important that you allow people without the money to buy the real estate right now, because if you get a license, you can always get the real estate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Carvajal. Usually I come here speaking as an activist and advocate. Today, I'm here as a concerned citizen. I also have brought the letter that we have sent out to all of the offices that's addressed to the mayor, addressing the funding issues and lack thereof. So I have three for you. Basically, I'm standing here because we support a merit-based system as long as there's proper checks and balances. People aren't taking into account true corporate social responsibility and what that looks like. The DCR has not taken into account the Latinx community, so we're still asking you to expand those zip codes. And I wanted to point out that the low-income communities in the valley where I live have been designated opportunity zones that encourage high net worth individuals to open businesses, but that the city is refusing to allow the low-income people living in those same areas an opportunity to do the same. Social equity has to be across the entire city.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Jasmine Aguilar. I'm the president of the working group. The working group requests that the city council suspend Phase Three application acceptance and processing until the social equity program for the city of Los Angeles is fully funded and operation. Furthermore, the working group requests that the city council commission a new social equity analysis report that will support the increase of qualified zip codes and subsequently creating equitable opportunities for Angelenos who have greatly suffered the harms of the drug war. This proposal presented by DCR does not promote equitable ownership and employment opportunities in the cannabis industry in order to decrease disparities in the life outcomes of marginalized communities to address the disproportionate impact of the drug war in those communities. I have documents I'd like to submit for further review. Thank you.
Next.
Good morning. My name is Jorge Nuno. I'm a longtime resident of South Los Angeles and also a small business owner. I'm here to really speak on the social equity applicants. You know, I'm not in the cannabis business, but in the last six months, I've been engaged by a lot of residents to be more informed about what that process is. So after, you know, spending time talking to colleagues in City Hall, in the community, I realized that the Department of Cannabis and the actually Social Equity Department is not well-funded, so this information is out to the community. I know there's positions open to get social equity managers and assistants. So for me, these concerns just goes back to the fact that this department is not being supported. And there's a lot of interest for this process to delay while there's people operating that's pre-Ico. So I think there's a lot of special interest. They're allowing this process to delay. So we need to fund that department, and we're taking this serious. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. And before the next speaker, if I could get Alexis DeAngelo, Cheryl Branch, Christina Marsh, Daniel Sosa. Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Oscar Aguayo. I run a Business Resource Center in South Central Los Angeles. As I canvass my community, the small businesses, they're giving me one question. I want to know more about the cannabis industry. Where do I get more information about this? Unfortunately, there has not been an outreach program or any other type of resource for us to be able to provide them, and that's really unacceptable. There's a lot of people that are interested into this in my community, and that's very important. Another thing is I had a brother that went through the application process, and even through that whole process, it was very complicated for myself to be getting a lot of this information for him. Again, he didn't qualify at the end of the day because it was too late for him. But this is really concerning, and we need to be able to work on a lot more outreach for the small businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Alexis DeAngelo. I'm the outreach liaison for the California Cannabis Industry Association. We represent over 475 businesses across the state of California, representing 10,000 employees and 600 brands. We are in favor of a merit-based system. We would encourage you to please give Cat Packer the support that she needs in staffing and in funding. And we are totally against the lottery system. We find it very unfair, and for a community that has worked so hard to get to where they're at, merit-based is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
My name is Christina Marsh, co-founder of Loki Lotion and owner of Loki Lotion. And I'm here to speak on Phase One operators. They're suffering. I'm employed by a Phase One operator. Phase One are the incubators for Phase Two. These are the best guides we have, but they have no funding to help us. We can no longer allow the rogue industry to flourish like it is. Either there is enforcement, or there's no taxes for your legal operators because we're all suffering. Every layer of me has been stripped away, every resource. I hope I don't become homeless again. I fight every day for my company. Loki will get its license because we are here to serve our community. We have always been an outreach, and the homeless and the URM and all the agencies in this city need us to employ their rehab homeless and be able to contribute to the city again. Our hands have been tied since July because I followed the law, and I'm wondering if I should have followed the law.
Thank you. Before you begin, if I could get Esteban Aria, and I know I butchered that, Kevin Wharton Price, Jack Gildea, and Karim, if you're here, Webb? Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Daniel Sosa. I'm a lifelong resident of Los Angeles. I also own and operate La Brea Collective since 2007. I've been arrested for cannabis six times and detained by police many more times than that. I think social equity is so important. I think making an effort to create an opportunity for those who have been directly impacted by the war on drugs is a very noble cause, and I'm proud to be an advocate and a part of that program. However, I do not understand why those who have not ever had an arrest or conviction are being considered for social equity on the same level as those who have. To me, the mission of social equity in Los Angeles is to make an effort to repair some of the harms caused by the war on drugs. To me, that means giving those who have been directly impacted an opportunity to thrive in the same industry which they were unjustly punished for participating in during prohibition. Opening up social equity to those without cannabis arrests or convictions undermines the terribly negative impact that arrests and convictions have on the lives and families of nonviolent drug offenders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And then if Kellen Martz could get in line and Janave Sobers? Yes?
Hello, my name is Esteban Aria. First, I'd like to thank council president and council members for the continued dedication to equity in cannabis and to thank Cat Packer, Associate Director Garukian, for their support for the social equity program. My name is Esteban Aria, and I am a Social Tier One, social equity applicant. I was born and grew up in South Central Los Angeles in Hyde Park, under the care of my single mother. She was caught up on the war on drugs, and as a result, I struggled in foster care and saw my family lose many opportunities, all for trying to survive through an industry that many are profiting from today. I have worked hard for several years to set a foundation for a cannabis business and have been doing my best to support the social equity program and its important mission as a community member. I want to thank the DCR for crafting potential solutions to make sure there's clarity and the program is as effective as possible. I want to express my support as a stakeholder for the mix of a lottery and a merit-based system. I am a social equity applicant. I am a social equity applicant, and I don't come with big money or corporate investors or incubators. I heard about the program on my own and have been trying to build a business with all its ups and downs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, councilman. My name's Jake Gildea. I'm the Community Impact Director for a LA-based cannabis group called Telos, here to make comment regarding DCR's recommendation on delivery non-storefront retail pilot program. Any recommendation that disqualifies Phase Two pending licenses from the delivery pilot program unnecessarily compromises the quality of direct-to-consumer services in LA in the immediate future. Recommendation would effectively ban current proven direct-to-consumer operators from expansion in LA, directly impacting social equity partners depending on the opportunity to partner with tech platforms and supply chain solution-oriented partners in order to shore up their capacity to run a successful and feasible delivery business. Disqualifying them from an opportunity to have a retail outlet as part of the delivery pilot program is punitive to Phase Two. Businesses such as distribution and manufacturing are valuable primarily as complementary assets, especially social equity-qualified operators that may lack working capital. There's previously been no language from the city to suggest that Phase Two licensing activity would impact the capacity to engage Phase Three, and we remain hopeful that council will take that into consideration regarding the recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Yes, sir?
My name is Kevin Wharton Price, African Town Coalition. I would like to thank City Hall for the work that you've done on the social equity program. I'd also like to thank Cat Packer for the diligence that she has extended to us throughout the communities and making sure that we understand what is happening and what's coming. The reason why I'm here is that there was a -- in the other paper, there was this thing about changing the three businesses to 12, saying that a person who has 49% of a license can have -- the proposal is to make it 12 licenses versus three. And so, you know, we are in disagreement with the expansion from three businesses to 12 because what it does is that it opens up more of a monopoly, an opportunity for monopolies to be developed and to undermine this social equity program here in our city. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Mr. Webb?
Good morning, councilpersons. First of all, thank you for your courageous leadership. And I'm here today to really emphasize the story that's going to be written here. What you guys have courageously done is establish the possibility for fairness when policymaking meets possibility and people who otherwise wouldn't have access to resources that improves outcomes through commerce and new industry. I just want to emphasize how important it is that at the beginning of this story, that we get it right and that we, in a merit-based way, are positioned to be sure that the first businesses and the first stories that are written about social equity is a good one.
Thank you. So let me ask to get Kristin Lavelle. Pastor Smart, I saw earlier, come on down if you're here. Rachel Torres and Rhonda Dixon. Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Kellen Martz. I'm an attorney with Hobson, Bernardino and Davis. First, we'd like to thank DCR for all their work. However, we do think that the budget needs to be increased because the delays are hurting social equity clients, Phase Three clients, and everyone. So that's the first concern. Second, we are opposed to a lottery system. It takes away a lot of the power of DCR and the council to regulate who goes into a neighborhood. We also think it takes away the power of the council itself to weigh in and the neighborhood councils, who I think have been left out of the discussion and have a big role to play in the decision of who goes into their neighborhood as a cannabis business. We are in favor of a merit-based system. However, again, our concerns are that the delays of setting that up and deciding how to do that are going to hinder a lot of people who don't have the money to wait for the council and DCR to make these decisions. So an increase in the budget is going to move this process along for all these people here.
Thank you. Please come forward. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Jan B. Sobers. Can I have additional time? I'm speaking also on behalf of my mother, who has a disability.
No, we'll start her time at one minute. You have to get the same amount as the others, so go ahead.
I'm speaking also on behalf of my mother.
You're speaking for one minute. Come on, let's don't debate. Let's give her her one minute again. Go ahead. Give her a minute. Yes?
I'd like to start by saying that I'm a Tier One social equity applicant in Phase Three. I'm applying for a non-retail, or rather, a non-storefront retail delivery license. My mother and I have waited for this opportunity for over a year. We've sat on property for over a year. Consideration in the licensing application process must be given to those who have waited and prepared and listened to the city and been involved in this community. And so I'm in favor of a merit-based, but also a threshold-based system that gives consideration to those who have already prepared. Additionally, I very strongly oppose DCR's desire to relax ownership limits, effectively creating social equity oligarchies in which as few as 17 investment entities could control the entire social equity market. I very strongly oppose that. I don't know how I would be able to, as a small business, operate in this city controlled by only 17 operators. Additionally, there should be an ADA coordinator assigned to DCR with consideration for those applicants with disabilities such as my mother.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Rhonda Dixon. I'm an attorney, and I'm the policy advocate for the Green Believers Meetup Group. I'm here to support a merit-based application, funding of the program, so that we can actually get the information out and assist social equity applicants, because right now, this is something that's being done by moneyed interests, and there's just too much influence by outside forces to make this a fair process. There is also the issue of a pathway to legalization for people that are already in operation. If we don't give that to people, then what we're doing is it's not a meaningful social equity program. Everybody's watching what we're doing here, and if we don't fund this and do this right, it's going to be like someone else said, "We want it to be a good story and not a bad story about how we do this." Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor, if I could get Samantha Tabak and Cherie Franklin. Pastor?
I'm Pastor William Smart, president and CEO of Southern Christian Leadership Conference and part of Green Believers. I've been -- I was one of the first African-American pastors that was in favor of this. I took a lot of ridicule from a lot of people. I want a system where more black African-American people can get into business, they can have the jobs. They were selling this on the streets when it was illegal. None of this legal. I don't want to see them cut out. We want them, our process, where they can get in, they can hire people, they can have businesses, they can be a part of this. I don't want my folk locked out of this, councilpeople. I want them a part of this. God bless you.
Thank you. Yes. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name's Rachel Torres with UFCW Local 770. On behalf of our 30,000 members, we wish to voice our strong support for DCR's efforts to streamline the social equity program application system and ensure diversity. The combination of lottery and merit systems helps achieve this. The first-come, first-served system has risked to benefit only the most resource individuals. And at the same time, we appreciate the guarantee that whichever system we use has the utmost transparency and with careful prescreening for Tier One and Tier Two qualifications. We want to echo the community concerns that each applicant is carefully screened in either meeting initially or throughout, developing to meet all of the applicant's requirements, including worker protections, local and transitional hiring, and social responsibility. And there must be accountability measures in place to hold licenses to their promises. All of this relies on proper funding, and we strongly support the January 18th joint lead -- Letter on Cannabis and Social Equity to ensure funding for DCR to meet its social and health equity, education, and community reinvestment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself, and I'm looking for Steve Robertson and Toma Eer. Are you here? And Tony Kim. Yes.
Hi, my name is Samantha Tabak. I work with Green Wise Consulting, and we have worked through the licensing process with many operators across the state and wanted to come out in strong support of a merit-based application. In other jurisdictions where we have worked with operators through the application process, it has led to great frustration and inability for the Council to voice their opinions when we have seen a lottery-based system. We also want to come out strongly supporting more funding for the DCR program. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
Good morning. Cherie Franklin with Think and Grow Lab and Go Verde Incubator. Thank you for the commitment to the social equity program and thank you, Kat Packer, for your leadership. But I want to just say a few points and we'll submit a letter. One is that the city has the power to assist social equity applicants by dealing with commerce. We need to make sure that maybe 50% of the products that are produced here by Phase Two applicants can be, have shelf space within the retail stores. If they don't have shelf space here, they're not going to get it anyplace else. So if we can put that in a mandate for all social equity applicants to be able to have priority shelf space in retail stores, there are only about 800 in the state. Secondly, we don't support a lottery system. You cannot control who gets the licenses. We support a merit base, and we support the city digging down into the resources it has through all the other departments such as the Neighborhood Council, the Business Resource Centers, to pull together leadership with the industry leaders to provide a training program and get the applicants ready to submit. They cannot submit if they're not ready. But we have the resources here and let's pull it together. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Steve Robertson. I'm from the Green Believers, and I believe in my heart that the community needs to come together and get all this stuff done together. We can't be separated, and we need everybody on board on this. And at the end of the day, we looking out for the kids, and we only ask one thing, this help us out. I've been gone for 30 years. I'm one of the first part of the drug wars, period. And I'd like everybody to just get along, get this done, so we can leave a legacy, so we can be all right. So help us out on this, please.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Kim?
Good morning, Council President, DCR. My name's Tony Kim. I am the founder of a company called Telos Cannabis Group, as well as a board member of the Korean American Coalition. Relative to the, regarding the proposal for recommendation that Phase Two applicants not be applicable for the non-storefront delivery pilot program, while we applaud that the non-storefront delivery pilot program exists and is moving forward, to punish the Phase Two applicants who navigated through the DCR's recommendations or instructions that there'll only be three licenses per social equity applicant, we went through great lengths of working together with them to figure out which three each applicant were applying for, and non-storefront delivery was a big part of this. And so, for them not to be able to apply for non-storefront delivery at this current pilot program will have, you know, massive detrimental implications to their strategy moving forward. So we'd like to strongly recommend that this recommendation not move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Toma Gracianni. I'm a Phase Two applicant. I read the recommendation from the DCR when it was released, and I was really surprised to see the non-storefront delivery exclusion. I think not only does it go against the recommendations of Prop M by giving priority to Phase Two applicants, it goes even further to exclude them from that process, and I think that's just a little, you know, counterproductive. A lot of these applicants are small brands, not all of them, but some of them are small brands, and they rely on the ability to use non-storefront delivery in order to grow their business. I think it's really unfair that this recommendation comes up now after people have already applied. And lastly, I do want to speak about the lottery system. I met about three years ago with representatives of all of your offices, and the one thing I heard across the board is that a lottery system doesn't work, it just brings on a lot of lawsuits, and it was something that was never going to happen. I don't know why it's being brought up again.
Thank you. Okay, and if I can get, it just says Woo Kika Keith. Again, I'm looking for Virgil, if he's here, and Nicole Brennison. Yes?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Branch. My name was called earlier.
Yes, it was.
I'm from the, thank you. I'm from the Green Believers, and we are a faith-based reentry program in Los Angeles. We wanted to bring to the attention of the group today our emphasis on supplier diversity. As you put together this phase and make the final recommendations, consider having a certain amount set aside for supplier diversity so that our social equity candidates from Phase Two and upcoming Phase Three will have a good chance for successful businesses. Also, consider changing the definition of a complete application to include the sum of the parts. There's many different buckets that you have to hit and milestones to have a complete application, and it's caused some problems with stacking and other things. So we think that there needs to be a reconsideration to redefine what a completed application is so that it's the sum of the parts. And lastly, just two seconds, we really look bad. LA is the spotlight for social equity program, and we have no funding. So the department can't even begin to address all the many, many issues unless we get a well-funded program.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Kika Keith. I am a social equity applicant. You know, since we found out about this social equity process, there are plenty of us community members who have studied the regulations, who have followed the regulations as they were stated, who got properties, who've invested a lot, and I don't want us to be forgotten in the midst of us trying to combat all of these predatory folks coming in and going into our community and offering $2,500 referrals for social equity applicants. So as we set up a lottery system for this first round, please don't forget us. Please don't forget us, the ones that are going out to the community and plan on being effective, the ones of us that have some sort of business acumen that can operate a business, those of us that have found investors, right, and have the opportunity to be apprenticed or mentored by them, please don't forget us in this process. So I would ask you to please look at, in that first round, possibly a dual merit-based and lottery-based system, so that those of us who are actually ready have an opportunity to compete. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a Michelle McKinney? Michelle McKinney?
Yes. I'm going to ask that my daughter be able to speak on my behalf. My disability sometimes prevents me in public settings to speak.
Then we shall do that.
I also would like a time and a half, please, as a part of my accommodation.
Now, I can give you, I can let your daughter speak for you.
Yes.
Got to give everybody the same amount of time.
Thank you, sir.
So let's start the minute over again and go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. My mother, Michelle McKinney, is a social equity applicant in our partnership. She brought me home from college to help her with this opportunity and to create an opportunity for myself. She was born in Watts, California, and raised throughout the Los Angeles County foster care system. And because of the policies of the foster care system during that time period, she was shipped off to communities in the valley such as Van Nuys, Lake Bitteras, and North Hollywood. These zip codes should also be included in the social equity program, along with other zip codes in the valley that I can't think of the names of right now. Additionally, I'd like to reemphasize the absolute necessity of an ADA coordinator assigned to the DCR for applicants such as my mother who have disabilities and will struggle throughout the application process additionally on top of being a social equity applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the last speaker, Yang Perez. And this will conclude. Yes, sir.
Hello, good morning. Thank you, Council meeting. I am Yang Perez. I actually collected 6,365 signatures for Proposition 215 in 1996, so I'm very happy how this process has gone all the way to where it's been, even though it's been a really, really long time. What I am here is to say that we, my people or the group of people have spent enormous amounts of money to maintain ourselves within the ordinances, and we see how other people that are with their non-licensed pharmacies or deliveries or every other thing are able to continue flourishing as we have been here in this battle for over 20 years and have not been able to be successful. So I urge all of you to please take that into consideration. I've spent over $200,000 last year just to stay compliant by maintaining a place and being all with your rules, and we keep on seeing that this keeps on being pushed and pushed and pushed, and we just can't afford it anymore. I'm about to lose my house. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like the representatives from the department to come up, sergeants, if we could clear the way.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Would you like item number one read into the record?
Please, go right ahead.
Department of Cannabis Regulation report relative to proposed amendments to the Los Angeles Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation of commercial cannabis activities in the City of Los Angeles and amending the rules and regulation for cannabis procedures.
Okay, Ms. Packer. Floor is yours.
Good morning, Rules Committee. It's a joy to be here to address you this morning, to discuss an update related to commercial cannabis activity licensing, and I also want to say to Councilwoman Martinez, it's a pleasure to have you join this Rules Committee. I think that your leadership on this Rules Committee is going to be critical to us being able to move forward.
It's great to be here early in the morning.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you to many of the representatives who came to address the Rules Committee this morning. Part of what we have learned over the course of the last year as we have been moving forward with the implementation of the city's cannabis policies is that we have a lot of work to do.
Yes.
And this time last year, and maybe even a few months before, the City of Los Angeles became the largest regulatory market in the world. And with that, we have a collective responsibility to ensure a number of things. One is that we're reinvesting into communities, that we have an equitable licensing process, that we're discussing efforts to shut down illegal operators, and doing so in ways that prioritize equity and policing. But part of what we are here to discuss today is a realization around our licensing process. Over the course of the last year, we've had an opportunity to watch the state of California and its regulatory program develop. Again, we are about 13 months into what legalization has meant for the state of California, and I've had an opportunity to connect with regulators from across the United States, across the state of California, other jurisdictions that have equity programs. And part of what we recognize is that in order for us to move forward and truly meet the intention of the original equity program, which was to acknowledge and address the harms that community members had experienced by way of the war on drugs, and to allow for equitable access to the cannabis industry, we need to see changes to our regulatory program before we move forward. Part of what the Department of Cannabis Regulation has been doing over the course of the last 14 months is connecting with many of the stakeholders who are here in the room today to consider a number of options that are before this Rules Committee and before the City Council to consider in how we move forward. The truth of the matter is, is that there is a limited size of our market, and in order to move forward and to address the program in the way that it was originally intended, there are actions that we need to take today in order to move forward. We have before you today a number of recommendations on how we can move forward with Phase Three. Part of what the department intended to do was to outline a number of options that the Council could move forward with licensing. And again, in connecting with a number of different stakeholders, jurisdictions, there are a number of ways in which the city could move forward to issue licenses. One of those ways is through a first-come, first-served model. Another way is through a lottery. Another way is through a merit-based system. But ultimately, what we want to provide is a process that is more fair. And throughout the course of the year, we have been engaging with community members, industry stakeholders, law enforcement, other agencies, and there are steps that we are taking every single day to move the needle forward. But today, we need to be able to move forward and address a number of items related specifically to addressing illegal enforcement. Stakeholders have said time and time again, and Councilmember Harris Dawson, you had mentioned this at our stakeholder meeting, that in order for equity applicants to even be successful in the licensing process, there needs to be a comprehensive enforcement strategy to shut down illegal operators.
Yes.
That is the case for our equity applicants as well as all licensees. We are taking first steps into this process. I think that this industry knows well more than others that in order for us to be able to harvest, we need to plant seeds, and we have been planting seeds over the course of the last year. But we still have work to do before we are going to be able to see the fruit of our labor in this regulatory process. Some of that involves funding the social equity program, some of that involves making specific policy amendments. But we are here today to answer any questions about the recommendations that we have before you. We feel as though these recommendations are well-informed as we've been connecting with many different stakeholders throughout this process. But ultimately, we want to be able to move forward what is best for the City of Los Angeles, and so we'd love to be able to address any concerns or questions that you have at this time.
You know, one of the things that I think we heard a lot about today during public comment was the lottery system. Why don't you talk to us a little bit about that and maybe compare it with some of the other alternatives?
So there is a limited number of opportunities for licensure for retail activity in the city. This is largely created by the limitations that we've created on the number of licenses that can be issued per community plan and the requirement that retail businesses be 700 feet away from one another. Our current licensing process for Phase Three is based on a first-come, first-served model, but it incorporates a requirement that applications be complete before we are able to move forward. This particular process causes a number of complications for efficiency. First and foremost, it requires a lot of upfront investment from applicants before they would ever be able to determine whether or not they would be successful or even eligible for a license. Ultimately, again, with the first-come, first-served model and the reality that businesses can displace one another once one business plants its flag as a retail business, means that you could have competing applicants in a particular community plan that essentially dislodge one another and without knowing who verified applicants are before they identify properties that could or could not be eligible. We really have a domino effect of uncertainty that allows our licensing process to go on. And again, it is a method which we think is generally inefficient. It is uncertain for applicants, and so part of what our consideration of a lottery would do is to try and instead of having an arbitrary method based on first-come, first-served where folks who have resources could quickly enter in information onto a website, it could be more fair in the sense that qualified applicants would have an equal opportunity to participate in a lottery system. Now, it is the case that a lottery system itself is arbitrary, but my primary concern is not that it be arbitrary process, but that it not be fair. I think that it can be random and still be fair, but if we have a first-come, first-served model, we are going to prioritize the well-resourced, and part of what we heard today is that applicants need resources before applications even become available to participate. So that is, that is one option under the lottery. We could also move forward with a first-come, first-served model that had thresholds involved to try and allow for more certainty in the process. That is also a part of what is before you for consideration. I can pass it to my colleague Alex Friedman to discuss a little bit more about the complications with the first-come, first-served model. But ultimately, my most sincere recommendation is that we take the time to try and figure out what type of merit-based system might work for the City of Los Angeles. We have watched over the course of the last year as we have moved forward with Phase One priority processing and are in the process of Phase Two priority processing, and I know that everyone is eager to be a part of this market. People wanted their licenses yesterday, but the truth of the matter is, is that we are just getting started. The state of California is just getting started. There were numbers released at the end of the year that showed that the City of Los Angeles was about 33% of the state's retail market, and that is just with our Phase One applicants. We will continue to be the center of commercial cannabis activity as we move forward, but in order for us to do so- in order for us to do so responsibly, I think that there are changes that need to be made to our equity program. We need to address a comprehensive enforcement strategy in the city. We're going to have to continue to have conversations about community reinvestment and a public information campaign and discuss youth development and youth prevention, and we're doing all of those things. We're connecting with the Department of Public Health within the county of Los Angeles. We're connecting with all stakeholders across the state of California. But I think that we have an opportunity right now to not rush into Phase Three, and we recognize that there are some folks who have properties, they have been waiting on the sideline to participate. There are other folks who have been waiting for the city to be able to deliver resources before they even get their ducks in a row. And I think that part of our recommendation split the difference and tried to address those folks who have properties and already and are ready, and those folks who would benefit from a merit-based system with more services being ready and available to applicants. So, I think that part of what we have to talk about is the reality of what the department has the capacity for over the course of the next year. This time last year, we were a department of four. We are now a department of fourteen. But in order for us to efficiently move forward, we have to be able to increase staff, to go out and do these community meetings, to be able to staff the commission when they have these public hearings, and we're doing all of those things. But again, we're still in the process of tending to our seeds so that we can produce this harvest of licensing in the city. And so, the recommendations that are before you today are an intention to ignite dialogue about how the city moves forward with this process.
Okay, well, thank you. And before I recognize Mr. Harris Dawson, you know, I know there are people that wanted license, you know, yesterday or the day before today, and I get all of that. And I think we're real close to getting this right. But it's more important to me for us to take a little more time to, you know, one of the things that I've learned a lot from you and I've learned a lot from a lot of the other folk that have been in this business a lot, but the most I have learned is from the people that come here, hearing after hearing and testify. And so, I want to make sure we do this to the best of our ability. And so, if that takes just a little more time, I'm prepared to do that. We recognize that enforcement is an issue. We're going to be asking in the budget to get a significant amount of money so that we can literally go out and properly enforce this to protect the businesses that operate within the law. We really need to vet this lottery system and, you know, there's, somehow, we must create this balance. So, I just want you to know that this committee is determined, the three of us are determined to do this and to make it as fair as possible because we do recognize that all eyes are on us. We do recognize that, and I want everybody in this room to recognize that. Recognize that we want to be as fair and as equitable as we can. So, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And it's great to be joined by our colleague, Councilwoman Martinez, early in the morning. It's good to see you.
Good to be here.
It's, Ms. Packard, so you did a great job explaining the benefits of a lottery, and I just wanted to hear the other side of the coin because this was a very helpful public hearing because members of the public came up on all sides of the issue and folks really, I was really educated about different parties' approaches and different strategies to getting to the goal of having a legal business. And so, you described why a lottery makes sense for you. What's the other, because people got up and talked about the merit system as well?
So, I think that part of the challenges involved with a lottery is that depending on what the threshold for entering the lottery are, you could be allowing folks to access and win a ticket who may never be quite ready or even necessarily interested in participating. I think that there would be, there would have to be some type of threshold involved so that you had applicants who, one, were qualified for the social equity program who were participating, and then had some additional criteria to ensure that these are folks who are prepared and ready to move forward with the licensing process. We've heard from many stakeholders, particularly those stakeholders who have been involved in lottery drawings and other jurisdictions, is that this is a method where there is often legal challenges and there are often litigation involved with lottery. I think that that's generally the case whenever there are winners and losers in the system. But I think that there is a certain level of uncertainty involved in the lottery, and folks really would like to be able to have some control over whether or not they move forward in the process.
Okay. So, effectively, it sounds like you're saying depending on what the bar is to get into the lottery at all or to get a ticket per se, that it's not that dissimilar from a merit-based program, except it's not first-come, first-served?
So, we have a system that is based on certain criteria already, and that folks have to be eligible for the social equity program. But because of the way that the social equity analysis was conducted in the criteria, folks can qualify from the program by being low-income and living in a particular zip code. There are tens of thousands of people who are low-income in the City of Los Angeles and live in a particular zip code. So, I think that part of what I've been hearing from stakeholders is that they want some additional criteria. And I think that one of the stakeholders actually addressed that today, identifying that if there were people who were actually arrested and convicted and actually experienced directly the harms of the war on drugs, then they might, we might want to create a system that further benefits them versus folks who have lived in a particular community. And we had this conversation when we were having the social equity policy conversation in the beginning, and I think that we ultimately ended up with a system that allowed for both the prioritization of folks who were individually impacted and those who lived in communities. But ultimately, a merit-based system could allow us to create additional criteria where we are considering corporate social responsibility, where we are considering individual impact as it relates to the drug war and community benefit. And I've seen different models of that where we do get good operators who have good intentions and who are going to be good neighbors, and I think that that's what we want in the city.
Okay. I appreciate that, and certainly I would include in that the foster care system as one of those things, especially given the connection between the foster care system and the war on drugs. But just pivoting a little bit, the issue that I heard the most energy and concern around, frankly, between in this discussion between merit-based and lottery was the question of real estate. And people saying, well, I'm holding, you know, I have carry costs because I acquired this property because this property is the property that I need. How does the lottery system deal with that question? Because in fact, if I get a license, I'm one of these people that I qualify for a license and I don't have a space, the person that doesn't, that has the space doesn't really have a true advantage over me as I understand the process that you lay out.
So, part of our consideration of these options that we were laying out is that we recognize that we were dealing with a number of different stakeholders, some of which had acquired property and some of which didn't. The intention was to do a property-based lottery for a, essentially, Phase Three Part One. So, for the folks who had been holding on to properties for a year or an extended period of time, it would essentially be, a property would be a part of the threshold to enter into the lottery. I think that in practice, we would limit it so that only one applicant could win at one location. You wouldn't have individuals competing for similar locations, and it would essentially disperse the amount of opportunities that are available. But we were, in the consideration of our recommendations, we had recommended a Part One of Phase Three that dealt with folks who had identified property and had been making these payments and then tried to identify the one hundred additional licenses through a merit-based system. So, we are recommending that, our original recommendations asked for a consideration of us splitting the difference and doing a Part One Phase Three and a Part Two Phase Three. But ultimately, this Rules Committee could choose to do all lottery, all first-come, first-served, all merit-based. But in consideration of the two different types of stakeholders, those with property and those without, we tried to address it in the recommendations.
And this distinction about who has property and who doesn't and how they're treated in the system, that's something that's been generated by the department. That's not a part of policy that we've passed, or am I incorrect about that?
Good morning, Alex Friedman, Deputy City Attorney for the Department. So, currently in the ordinance, city law does not provide for any priority by showing that you have secured a property by a certain date. So, if the system opened up as is right now, if someone secured it, you would have to have a property to apply, obviously, but if you secured your property a day before the application window opened, you would be treated no differently than if you'd secured your property a year ago. Additionally, even if you've secured your property some time ago, you may be competing within seven hundred feet or in the same community plan as somebody who has secured their property as well. So, but yeah, currently, that would have to be a policy change the council implemented.
So, even though we have, the council hasn't addressed this issue of who has property and when they got it or not, in order to change the approach we have now, we'd have to take an action.
Yeah, it wouldn't be for the department just to decide to say to give someone that priority. It would need to be a council action.
Got it, okay. Switching gears and, you know, sort of getting in the lane that I'm always in, Ms. Packard, and on enforcement, and the reason I zero in on this question of property is what I, what we absolutely don't want to have happen, which I believe is likely to happen, is a property owner who has an illegal shop now getting a legal tenant later because we're not enforcing. Can you talk to us about how we could expect to prevent that?
I think that the way that our ordinance is currently situated, we are able to deny licensure for applicants who are engaged in, who are found to engage in illegal activity at this point. I don't believe that the current ordinance has a specific process that denies specific property owners. We don't necessarily register the property owner themselves as a part of our application process, so that's not something that we are independently tracking. But my, I share the concern and my kind of complementary concern is that there is so much illegal activity going on in the city right now. There are viable, you know, premium places that social equity applicants would love to get their hands on that are being occupied by illegal operators.
And just to add some detail to that, the ordinance currently provides that the city or the commission, DCR or the commission, could deny a license to an applicant who is found to have engaged in unlicensed cannabis activity. But the applicant is limited to somebody who has an ownership stake, so if somebody was just using the property or the landlord didn't appear as an owner, city law currently wouldn't use that as a basis to deny that. So, if you wanted to disqualify an actual address, regardless of who is applying there, that would need to be a policy change effectuated by the council.
Okay. And can you give us an update on just how we're doing on enforcement? So, I know our last discussion, we talked about cease and desist letters going out. You're looking back at the city?
I just gave my buddies at LAPD the look. But I think that part of what we've been doing over the course of the last several months is trying to steer various city agencies towards using a centralized complaint management system and also bringing other agencies to be involved in a cannabis task force. Over the course of the last spring, the department, along with the mayor's office, had organized a number of meetings where we invited agencies to report out on what their past practices has been as it relates to cannabis enforcement. And part of what we learned is that there has not been a systematic or coordinated effort long-term in the city to address cannabis issues, and there is not one tool or agency in the city that can tackle cannabis enforcement alone. I think it's going to take a collaborative approach with LAPD, with the City Attorney's Marijuana Enforcement Unit, with the Fire Department, with the Department of Water and Power, with the Department of Building and Safety, with Office of Finance. All of these agencies have enforcement tools that they're ready, and they need to be deployed in a systematic way that prioritizes our most concerning activity in the city. And that's part of what we have been organizing, but I will defer to my colleagues at LAPD.
And I'm going to want to hear more about that task force, but we'll hear from LAPD.
And let me just jump in. Mr. Harris Dawson, we have requested a significant amount of money in the budget so that we could put together a coordinated operation to do that because that's what it's going to take with every, every department that Ms. Packard referenced, in sync, working, you know, step by step with some methodical approach. And so, we need the money in order to make sure that they can do that, so we are trying to get that in this upcoming budget.
Good morning. Detective Vito Cisha, Los Angeles Police Department, Gang and Narcotics Division. Thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to speak. Along those lines, as far as what Cat Packer was saying, it's no secret that our traditional law enforcement methods have not been as effective as we would have liked them to be, but we have been having some viable discussions with DCR as well as our, some of our other city partners, the City Attorney's Office, DWP, Building and Safety, in order to develop new strategies. And also, thank you to Councilwoman Martinez as well as Councilwoman Rodriguez for being at the forefront and assisting law enforcement to find an avenue that could be more successful towards enforcement. And I think once that utility is shut off, it's going to be an extremely useful tool for us to use, and it's going to have a large impact. And I know that the City Attorney's Office, once LAPD serves search warrants at some of these unlicensed brick-and-mortar locations, that the City Attorney's Office is taking it upon themselves to go identifying either the owners of the property or the business owners, and at that point, sending them a summons, saying that they're going to be ordered to court and in order to address criminal issues involved with allowing them to rent these locations and allowing these unlicensed locations to exist on their properties. I think once all those key components get up and running, we're going to have a more significant impact on these unlicensed locations. It's not that the traditional ones are ineffective, they're just, like I said, not as effective as we would have liked them to be. I know that when we started out, we were at around three hundred and fifty unlicensed dispensaries. Now, we're below three hundred, so we are having an impact. It's just not the impact that me personally, as law enforcement, would like to see.
Thank you. And Ms. Packard, I know we, when I raised this, I talked about the cease and desist letters that we said were going to go out. My understanding was that those were going to come from the City Attorney's Office. Do we have anybody from the City Attorney's Office here who can tell us how many of those went out, who they went to, what happened?
I don't believe there's anybody from the criminal branch of my office here, but we can follow up with them and have them contact your office.
Thank you. Thank you. So, thank you all so much, and thank you for your work on this, and thank you for continuing to press the issue. I know your main task is getting the licensing system in place and getting it out so people can operate, but you've been very generous to us in terms of taking out the discussion around enforcement. Mr. Chair, I will, in my time there, but I would just ask that we get a report back on this task force and how the task force relates to the budget request that we're making and so that we can make sure that in addition to the mayor's office, the council's also hearing from this group of these different departments and how they're approaching the problem.
Makes sense. Ms. Martinez, do you want to jump in?
Thank you very much. Thank you, members. It's great to be here. Now, let's get in it. Can you help me, Ms. Packard? Can you clarify the collapsing of Tier One and Tier Two? Because as I read the report, it looks like you're removing one of the qualifications for our social equity program. And the way I read it, it appears that you're opening the door for wealthy people to be considered as part of the equity program by simply giving an option where you only have to live in this, in the disproportionately impacted area for at least ten years, and you don't have to have a conviction and you don't have to live, you don't have to have or be considered low-income. So, how is this keeping with the intent of giving access to those who have been wronged in the past?
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. I appreciate the question. The current ordinance, this is the law as it exists today, allows folks to qualify as a Tier One social equity applicant if they have a prior cannabis arrest or conviction or if they live, so if they have this conviction.
Sure, I understand that part.
And are low-income or are low-income and live in a disproportionately impacted area for five years. They can qualify as a Tier Two social equity applicant if for five years, they can qualify as a Tier Two social equity applicant if they either are low-income and live in a disproportionately impacted area for five years with a 33 and one-third percent ownership stake or if they live in a disproportionately impacted area for 10 years without any income requirement. So, our current ordinance already allows those businesses to qualify as long as they are, have lived in those areas for 10 years. And I believe that when we had this conversation originally, there were stakeholders who said, I have been low-income my entire life. But I lived in that community and just because I am not low-income anymore doesn't mean that I didn't experience those impacts and that I should qualify. Part of what we are recommending today is to try and simplify the process so that the only difference between a Tier One and Tier Two is by the ownership stake. Part of what we tried to do was to ensure, in order for this program to meet its original intention, we want these businesses to be 51 percent or more owned by folks who meet the equity criteria. But by clarifying and allowing folks to either choose by their ownership stake what they qualify in, we're trying to strengthen the equity criteria.
Okay. I understand. Now, thank you very much. My second question is, can you walk me through Section 2C, Part Two, which is a clarity and relaxed ownership limits on the forefront retail licenses? So, as I read this, and again, you can help me clarify this, we're currently allowing applicants to hold a minimum, I'm sorry, a maximum of three licenses. Is that correct?
For retail, yes.
Right. So, but the report is now recommending that we change the limit from three to 12 if a person has no more than 49 percent ownership and profit-sharing interest. So, my concern here is, my concern is, are we allowing individuals who have a vested interest and profiting off of this system to gain a greater market share? So, if the original intent was to give opportunities to communities that have been wrong during the war on drugs, should we really be enabling investors to gain more access?
I can clarify that provision. So, that 40?
I don't want to get played. So, this is what I'm trying to figure this out.
So, that would be limited just for stakes in Tier One businesses. So, the idea being, all those businesses will still have to have a 51 percent Tier One owner. Many of them are going to require a significant investment to get their dispensaries off the ground. And this was just opening it up. So, you wouldn't have somebody who would have a controlling interest and have 12 stores. All of these would just be limited to if you were investing in a Tier One. So, it's to try to expand the investor pool for these Tier One applicants to be successful.
So, it only applies for Tier One?
Yes.
Got it. I got it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. And I know when it's appropriate, it would be my recommendation to my colleagues here that we do not, I appreciate the work that was done on trying to figure out a way to open that up, but as chair, I don't support that. And I, this, at this juncture, I don't think we would be prepared to recommend that to our colleagues on the council. So, look, I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank you guys for sitting at the hot seats there, the three hot seats. But we have a lot of work to do. We'll probably reconvene, do another hearing in two, three weeks or so because we still want to move quickly. But there's a lot of information that we need to vet and go through. But today, Mr. Clerk, I would recommend that on Item One, we support the recommendations of the chair and that we adopt the CLA report on Item Two. So, that would be the recommended, recommended action for today.
Yes, sir. Would you like to dispossess?
Go right ahead.
Okay. For Item Number One, adopt the recommendations in this cannabis DCR report. Item Number Two, adopt the recommendations in the CLA report. Item Number Three, adopt the recommendations in the Exodus Commission report. Item Number Four, adopt the resolution, resolution relative to including the city on, the city on a list of eligible cities to receive a dollar per month lease on Caltrans parcels. And Item Number Five through 13, adopt the resolutions as recommended by the CLA.
Yes. So, if there's no objections, then so ordered. What is before this committee now?
The desk is clear.
Okay. Then we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.[1790.13][1790.13]